I'm without you.
As far as I can tell.
Just wait. Call the meeting to order the Georgetown City Council, because we please rise for a moment of silence, and then Mr. Lusby will lead us in the pledge.
Shall we pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lusby?
Here.
Mr. McEwen?
Here.
Mr. Penn?
Here.
Mrs. Tinglestein?
Here.
Mr. Shawalter?
Here.
Mr. Singer?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Next order of business is approval of the minutes of the June 23 meeting.
Motion.
Motion for approval. Second, please.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Show of hands, as you did receive your check register?
In abundance.
All right. Okay. Public comment, four minutes. Mr. Singer, I see you.
Oh, yeah.
You gonna...
Should I go down there?
No, you can do that from up here, I believe.
Higher seat in the house. You only have four minutes, so.
The, uh, I guess, because I'm up in the neighborhood, the people from Penn Avenue Baptist Church contacted me and asked if they could have the street closed for their vacation Bible school. Uh, there on the application, you see the contact person and his phone number. Anyway, what they want to close is Penn Avenue from Oak Street to Prather Boulevard from 9:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. on July 26, 2014. They're gonna have a, a street carnival. I think it operates from 10 to 4, the carnival itself, for those that are interested, and it's part of their vacation Bible school program. Uh, the estimated spectator attendance is 50, somewhere around in that range. And, uh, it looks like they're just gonna have barricades put up there at Prather and Oak Street, those cross streets. They provided their insurance, and that's it. I signed it because, um...
Tracy made you.
Tracy made me, and, uh... Pastor Smith, I, yeah, I wasn't, I mean, I, I could get his signature, but I just never had the application with me when I saw him. So, anyway, there you go.
You gonna make a motion, Mark?
Uh, well, I am just an humble presenter. I suppose that is for the other people.
And what you do is good.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, we got one and two. Marvin and McEwen.
Okay, we got all this. Any discussion on that? And we do have the application, all the paperwork's up to date. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mr. Moran, running center.
Again.
That's all right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name's David Moran. I'm here on behalf of the problem we're having in Derby State. Last meeting, Mr. Lusby made a motion that we, or you all, decided to go out and get an independent firm to resurvey this. Uh, just wanted to come back and do a follow-up, see where we're at on that, if you had opportunity to do that. If not, do you foresee in the, how soon this is gonna take place?
Josh, can you help me out?
Yeah, I was gonna say, our engineer.
RFQ is almost written, and it should be advertised tomorrow or the day after. Uh, we have a minimum of seven days for the advertisement, and then, um, once we meet, come up with a proposal from the consultant. We'll have to bring it in front of the council.
David, he's been, he's been on vacation. He's been in another world.
Yeah, he's downtown last time we had a meeting.
Yes.
I'm glad somebody brought him up today. Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Thank you, David. We'll get right on it, hopefully. Okay. I got a couple, couple things I just wanna call your attention to. I certainly like to welcome Troop 209 tonight. Would you stand and be recognized, please? Ms. Lovella Alcorn is, is their troop leader. We welcome you here tonight. Thank you. And we have, uh, some accomplishments of our school system. I wanna give them a little recognition, and we gave this, council members, you got this, I'm like going through this. It just shows that, uh, I think, we have an absolutely outstanding school system. Here's some of the accomplishments. Uh, we had some extras printed up, and they're outside the door there, if you'd care to look at them. It's, uh, it mentions athletics on here, but it far outreaches that. And, uh, I'd just like to, to give them the attention and, and tell them that we're very, very proud of their accomplishments, and, uh, uh, we keep moving forward. City Attorney, first reading of amendment to personnel ordinance, and the city clerk, I might add.
Before you read it, I wanna point out there was a, uh, an error on the ordinance itself. We had grade nine listed, it should've been grade eight, so that's been corrected. That's it.
An ordinance amending section 2-111 subsection C of the Code of Ordinances to create the position of engineering technician. Summary, section one. Amend section 2-111 subsection C of the Code of Ordinances, which sets forth the classifications, associated pay grades, and authorized positions for each department to establish the position of engineering technician, grade eight. Within the general government department, to add one public works maintenance worker driver position, and eliminate one public works maintenance worker position, and to add one sanitation worker driver position, and eliminate one sanitation worker position. Section two provides that any and all existing ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are repealed. Section three provides that if any portion of this ordinance is for any reason held invalid or unlawful, such portion shall be deemed a separate provision, and such holdings shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section four provides that this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky 40324. Introduced and publicly read the first time July 14, 2014.
First reading. I'll have the second reading here in next meeting. Okay, fire, resolution approving acceptance of the FEMA grant.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, we've received the FEMA, FEMA fire act grant for fitness equipment. Uh, I just need your approval to accept it. Then I'll go back, bid it out, bring it back to you for approval of the bids.
Motion. Kelly.
Second.
Discussion?
Wear it out.
Thank you. It's a 90-10 grant, or, or I mean, it's 10%.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Approval of existing extension on the existing line of credit at Kentucky Bank. Our company, Bob, welcome.
Good evening. Uh, questioning the council's approval of a two-year extension on our existing line of credit at Kentucky Bank. The loan amount is up to $3 million for a period of two years, at 2.75%. There's currently no balance on the line of credit. Uh, it was really approved by council in July of 2009, and I got the ordinance quoted there. Our board approved this item on June 17th.
Mayor make a motion for approval.
Motion for approval by David.
Second.
Second, who?
Any comments?
There's no, there's no current balance on this?
No. Hate to give it up once we got it active.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, thank you. Couple FYIs, if I could. Uh, the Mallor Point wastewater package plant is now offline, and we are pumping their wastewater back to Wastewater Two for treatment. And, uh, also, we have applied for and received our discharge permits on the two wastewater plants. Those had been in abeyance since 2006, due to no fault of our own, and we finally have received those, and they've become effective August 1st, for another five years. Just wanna bring you an update on those two things.
I have a question. May I have a question?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, last meeting, we had a gentleman from Kentucky American came and talked about the water, the fire hydrant situation, that they basically billed separately for fire hydrants, and, you know, why, you know, issue was lack of payment by, uh, developers on the private hydrants. How does a water company, or, and I guess you didn't probably know this better than anyone, especially the, on the, especially from a budgetary standpoint, or a finance standpoint, account for the costs of the fire hydrants? And how is that applied to people's bills, or, or is there a, is there a time in the budget, or a time in, in the financing, in which you talk about the cost of the fire hydrants? Or is that just assumed as being part of the cost of providing water to a city?
Well, when a new development goes in, we require the developer to put all that infrastructure in, uh, water lines, fire hydrants, valves, whatever it takes, and then that's deeded to the city on behalf of Georgetown Water for us to maintain and operate. Uh, the city does contribute $20,000 a year for the fire hydrant maintenance. That's to cover the replacement of bad hydrants, and the water that's flushed during testing by the fire department, things like that. So, once we take them over, uh, that's our responsibility. There's no separate charge on the bills for that, it's just part of the, just rolled it into the rate, it's part of the cost.
So, the fire, the fire hydrant maintenance comes out of the general government, turn it at the city's budget, and goes into the water companies, just sort of a payment?
Yeah. It doesn't cover all of it, but it helps.
How many hydrants does GMWSS, do you know how many?
I'm gonna say probably around 1,200.
Wow.
In the whole system, it's quite a few.
Would there ever be a case where, um, you know, you could put in a, I'm not asking that we can do this, but, that you would put in, like, a new development within the city limits, and ha, and size the water lines in such a way that you can provide, you know, residential water service, that is, turning on a spigot, or your out, outside spigot, but not size the lines to such a degree that you can operate fire hydrants off of? I mean, is it pretty much standard that there's gonna be a certain amount of water pressure in an urban setting to...
Well, in an urban setting, we always size them to supply the necessary pressure for fire hydrants too, as well as domestic.
Absolutely.
Now, county's a little bit different. It's mainly just domestic service, those are a lot smaller lines that won't support a hydrant.
So, they're all, pretty much within the city limits? It's pretty much understood?
Yeah.
That you're gonna, that you're gonna size them to support hydrants?
And there's gonna be hydrants within the city.
All right, thanks.
How much, do you remember how much Kentucky American was charging? It was like $80?
It's 80, $80 for private, 40 for public, I think.
And you remember how many that was, 117?
117?
I believe that it's 117 city, and the rest is private.
Right, right, yeah.
And they're asking for 38 to be switched to public.
I mean, it sounds like they're collecting more than the $20,000 being motion for 1,200.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Well, I got one question, my mate. Bob, we were hearing from Kentucky American that they were having trouble getting the people, the builders, to pay their, when they, you know, supply, to pay what they owe them. Are you having that issue?
No, 'cause our arrangement doesn't call for that. We just, they build it and give it to us, and we take it from there. We don't require any ongoing payments, so, you know, once they finish developing, they're outta here.
Might, yeah, you might oughta talk to Kentucky American about that then.
Well, I mean...
So, so, other than the $20,000 a year, you all assume the responsibility for service and maintenance and, and all of that then?
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And, so, that's, to clarify, that's worked into the normal rates that we pay?
It's part of the per thousand gallon rate, yeah.
At what point does it switch, does it become part of the, the system? In other words, at what point does it become deeded over to GMWSS? Is there ever a point where it's not in service and operated by GMWSS?
At, at the point that I would sign the final plat, then we consider it dedicated to us, that's sort of the cut over. And there's usually a year's warranty on, uh, things like that, but other than that, it's ours.
Yeah, I think, I think in other words, it's like selling somebody a car, and then putting a surcharge on the bill, on the sticker, for the four wheels. I mean, in, in essence, I mean, in providing an ur, water service to an urban area, what you're saying is you're, you're gonna size the lines in such a way to automatically go ahead and, and service the hydrants. What they're saying is, is that no, you may be, you may be supplying the water in such a way to supply the hydrants, but we're gonna go ahead and charge you for the hydrants as well. And I think that's probably the best way to look at it.
And there's probably 100 different ways to do it, but...
Well, I kinda like our way though.
I do.
Sounds better than...
Good question.
You know, that's, that's why I think it's so important that we have our own water company. We can control the cost for the citizens.
I want you all to know, I have another meeting set up with them next week, so, try to talk about another solution, whenever that might be. I don't, I don't know, but I'll, I'll, I'll let our own, I'll meet with them again.
How many households do we supply in the city limits, just within the city limits? I know there's about 2,000 out in the county, is it 8,300?
Yeah, probably somewhere around 10,000.
10,000?
10,000 households, now, or 10,000 meters in the, uh, in the city, and then probably, probably 1,500 of that would be commercial, so, say 8,500.
8,500, okay.
Yeah.
When you install a hydrant, or when a, when a developer installs a hydrant, is there an individual cutoff for that particular hydrant? Or is it just tapped in the line that, that services it?
Well, now, we require a separate valve at the fire hydrant, so we can get in there and maintain it if we have to, yeah. Didn't always do that, but we do now.
But it's not for, it's not to cut the hydrant off, take it out, it's to maintain it.
It's just, you know, something, if somebody hits a hydrant, you gotta have a way to cut it off.
Cut off the water, so you don't have a lot of waste.
Yeah, before your tank gets empty.
Not to take it out of the ground.
Anything else?
Will we, Chief, will we be able to do that at Mansion when that one was hit? Is that new enough that that happened?
At Mansion? Yeah, most of them now, in the last probably 10 or 15 years, that's the way they've been built. You just, you gotta valve, you gotta pipe, that way they can work on them.
It's the only instance I can think of recently.
Well, that's good, if it's only been one, that's pretty good.
We've had a few over the years.
Yeah.
I think when I started, we, 'cause that's what I deal with hydrants, we said that we had 1,200 for the city. When I started, we had 400. That kept tackling with mud and hot.
Does Kentucky American Water endorse municipal water? The reason why that they have the eastern part of our county is because is it that, their region kinda like where Kentucky Utilities goes to a certain point, and then Harrison would go to a certain point, and then Owen would go to a certain point for electric? Is it the same thing for water, or how did they get over here?
I'm not sure exactly how that was initially determined, what the service areas would be, unless it was just, they were the biggest player in town and went ahead and extended lines out that way, when the Werny lines, and just took it.
I think it was the old East Wa, East Scott County Earl Water District. I think that was right up to the interstate, and then all the, you know, new growth, post Toyota, came about, you know, um, when it goes across the interstate, you know, like Elkhorn Green and whatnot.
I think it was at the department too, as far as the Gunner Road and that place too. I just, I guess it's been there for a long time?
Mm-hmm. And we're, you know, we weren't big enough to supply all the Toyota's water needs?
Yeah.
On a daily basis.
Curious. Thanks.
Okay.
Thanks, Bob.
All right, thank you all.
Chief?
There's a big hole in chambers and bourbon, so...
It's not a stinkhole with it, don't get it.
No, don't.
Look at the reality. Um, the CPA is, uh, starting a program where they're gonna sell bricks to the public to be a part of the, if you wanted to be a part of the new police department building, so, um, to help pay for, um, like, gym equipment and stuff like that. So, we have 1,300 spots inside the lobby where we can put bricks that have family names, or in honor of, you know, that kinda thing. So, that program should be starting up here in the next couple of weeks. We should have posters out and advertising that kinda thing, so...
Do you know how much those are? Yes?
I don't think they've determined the price.
Okay.
Because we know what they cost us.
Do I? So can you, Marvin. You know that yard over there.
And then there's a new CPA class starting August 12th.
Thanks, Chief. Ms. Linda, update us on public works. You've been out there almost a month, maybe? Welcome.
Counsel? Mayor? Well, I've been out there a month, just a month and a day. It's been a very busy month. I'd like to say at this point, the staff is absolutely wonderful. They have been so dedicated. We've had overtime situations, downed equipment, hot weather, uh, haven't had to badger them for overtime or anything. They've been doing a really good job out there. I've had to learn a lot. Been riding in a garbage truck, a couple of them actually. Been out on the routes, getting to know the routes and everything like that. Have implemented some new procedures. We've got CDL checklist in place for pre and post-trip. Uh, we've had all of the sanitation trucks and the gripper truck inspected by AMTR, who is a professional mechanical inspection place. That's the good news and the bad news in one sentence there. And, um, we just this weekend got, uh, mobile truck washing place to come out, and the trucks were washed for the first time in a year, at least. So, that was a real biggie, um, maintenance-wise, mechanically, and everything else. That's most of the good news that I've got. The bad news is when I started out there, we had nine trucks, sanitation trucks. After the inspection process, we have five. Four of them have been pulled from service. Two of them have no hope of every come, ever coming back in service. Uh, two of them, I have the inspection sheets here. We, I took all of the list of all of the problems with the vehicles. The staff and I, the mechanical staff and I, sat down, went over each one of the items for an estimated cost, the parts and the labor. What we could do in-house, what we had to do out of house. Amazingly, on the last two trucks, which were the last two that were inspected, they're both, uh, right at $20,000. That's not all the repairs. There are some problems with each one of the trucks, there are different problems with each truck. That's gonna take some diagnosis. We're gonna have to have somebody come in and look at this transmission and see what the problem is with the transmission. It could be, we're gonna have to replace the transmission, rebuild the transmission. Um, those could be major costs that would add on to the 20,000. Uh, one of them has that same situation with the motor, which could be a lot of money. Uh, both of these trucks are older units, one's a 2004, one's a 2005 truck. I've not totally made the decision whether to try to fix these trucks or not. In my mind, they're not worth it. We could plunk $50,000 into them in a heartbeat and have a couple of 10-year-old trucks that we could use occasionally. There are issues with the trucks that are still in the fleet, our active trucks. The automated truck is running into the third week of its vacation. It was in Lexington for two weeks with a mechanical problem. They got it fixed, it, we went and got it, picked it up, and we took it to Louisville today for a transmission problem. They're telling us it'll be at least two weeks before they can get it looked at, figure out what's wrong with it, and have a chance of getting it back.
Now, this is under warranty, this one?
This is warranty work. This is warranty work. And evidently, this, the problem from the last two weeks is a problem that may be a, a widespread problem with the mechanics of the, of the, these kind of trucks. It has something to do with the regen procedure, so, uh, that may be a big issue for that manufacturer at some point. But right now, we've had two incident, this is the second incident we've had that involves this problem with this truck. This is the first one with the transmission. But, um, that was the truck that ran the double routes. So, now, we have these remaining trucks, and as you all know, we, we lease the truck for a month. Why, I see we've had it a week, a little over a week now. It's a smaller truck, but it was all we could get. It's a 20-yard instead of a 25. These other trucks that we are running have a lot of miles on them. Our miles are a lot harder than highway miles, and, uh, the, the trucks are not in good shape. And, and we're, one of them is in the garage every day for something. And that truck, we just put $22,000 into rebuilding the whole back end of the truck. Oh, did I mention that that one needs an engine overhaul also? I think I missed that. This is where we are mechanically, uh, equipment-wise. On the, on this part of the sanitation thing, we're gonna have to have a truck to stay in business. That's, so, at the next council meeting, I'll probably... So at the next council meeting, I'll probably be asking you all to purchase one. I found one on the state bid contract. Well, actually, there were two. But there are, there is one, at least one available out there right now. I hope it's still available in a week or so. So that's the update on sanitation, Public Works. Anybody got any questions about that?
Yes. On your day-to-day operations there in your department, how many trucks go out on routes every day?
We send five out every day if one of them is the automated truck. If one of them is not the automated truck, then we have to send out another garbage truck. What else?
Lots of sales.
Linda hit the road running. I think she's done an outstanding job since she's been out there. Now, we did have an outside mechanic come in. It wasn't done by our own people. We had someone called in that went over each, each of these trucks and inspected them. And she has a list of.
Yes, it's.
Whatever, with every, every single truck.
This is one truck. This is 311. This is the list of all of the malfunctions, all of the things that they found that was wrong with it. It goes into two pages. I've got copies of any of this if you, any of y'all would like to see it or look at it. It's, the yellow are things that were purely safety-related features, except for this one red one, which I had to just give it another color because it was, the left rear wheel was loose. I thought that warranted more than yellow, so I changed that to red.
How much have we spent so far as far as fixing the nine trucks or fixing the ones that are, I know two are, two will never be back. And then, but how, how about the other two? And how much have we spent so far since, since she came on board, since we started the audit?
I don't have a number on those if I can, I could get it for you because we jumped straight in as soon, the inspector was coming and doing two trucks a day. And I was trying to give him something that was good and something that was not so good. So we could jump in and work on the bad one and fix a lot of the stuff on it. And we have fixed some of the things. There was lots of hydraulic problems, just tons and tons and tons of hydraulic problems. On the trucks that we've repaired, we have, we've had some broken leaf springs. We've had some bushings and some bearings that were bad. We've had lots of hydraulics. We've had lights. We've had horns. We've had backup beepers. We've had those kind of things that weren't working on the truck. I have not tried to put a cost on that. Once we had enough to kind of squeak by these last two, I'm like, we're not doing anything until we can figure out where we're going with these trucks to see. Because we, we don't have great trucks now. The, the 324, the 345 truck that we just fixed, they're still have slow compactor speeds. They have a little breakdown, you know, every day or so, there's something wrong with it. There's a spring that's loose. There's a shock that did this. There's a this, there's a that. It's, it's just like fixing a 1983 Pinto, you're doing it every day.
Linda, on the, on the hydraulic issues, have we done a complete flush of all the hydraulics?
On two of the trucks we have, and it has made a difference on the tipper speed. One of the trucks, at some point along the way in the repairs, someone tried to increase the diameter of the hose to improve the speed, and it had the reverse effect. So we're now in the process of waiting for those hoses to come in, which is, you know, maybe $150, $200 plus three or four hours of shop time to replace all those, to take it back, to try to get that speed back up. Because that speed is what makes it efficient for us out there. If you have to stop and wait, at one point, we had the, these two trucks in question, the, the tipper speed or the compactor speed on them was like 90 seconds, you know? So we were losing an hour and something a day on that one truck, waiting for it to come down and smash the garbage and come back up so we could put more garbage into it.
Are there any salvageable parts on the two that are?
On even, maybe the three, two, one of the ones that we pulled from service and these two others. There, there are tires, there's rims, there's hoses. There, there are a lot of salvageable parts. That would be one of the first things we would want to do if we got to the point of surplusing these, is going and scavenge what we can and keep it for usable parts and recuperate some.
And there's a, there's a pretty big market for the salvageable parts for the, for the garbage trucks. So I feel confident that we could, that we could get rid of a lot of that.
Yeah, and there's some of it we would probably want to keep and use it on, that uses, use it on the other trucks that we've got. But we really need some efficient trucks because we have, one truck, 309, is a 2000, maybe 2009, 2010 truck, and it, it functions well. When you look at the tonnage list, the automated trucks first, and then that truck is always right under it because they, they're not breaking down every day. They're not stopping. They're still going. You, you go from month to month to month and go down the list of the trucks and hear, oh, in May, this truck had zero tons. Well, it was in the shop for the whole month.
Are you keeping in contact with the rental places to see if we can get another one, if we need another one?
I can get another one like we got, which has the single tipper on the back and is a 20-yard single axle. I can probably get another one of those. Have not been able to come up with another 25-yard dual axle two-tipper. Felt fortunate to find this one that was for sale.
Anything else?
Mayor, I'll, I'll just throw out a thought. Okay. And I'm, I'm not advocating this in any other context other than just a temporary measure, at least right now. But if, if a private company were needed to be contacted to come in, that may or may not be an option for you. I'll let you all kind of make the call on that. But sometimes in the past, we've had to kind of go outside of our own resources to get help with things, things like snow removal, for example. Frank Hamilton, you know, came in and, and has helped us, helped you, and probably both mayors in the past. And I guess I'll just throw out, you know, kind of think outside the box a little bit. And I'm sure you are, but as it relates to something like this, there used to be a guy named Dave Loney that lived here in Georgetown. I haven't seen him for years, but I suspect that, you know, he would have been somebody we could have called and said, hey, this is an area or route that we need some temporary coverage on, and maybe they could help out. So anyway, just something to think about.
I hadn't thought of that. We can definitely check into that and see if there's something like that available.
If you need it. I'm just.
We had, we had a pretty tough holiday. We were down to three trucks.
Yeah.
And of course, Karen gave me a heads up and messed up my holiday.
I, we almost had to bring in a couple extra people just to answer the phone. It was insane.
It was here at City Hall too.
Yes. I tried to give everybody a heads up as soon as I saw where we were going and what had happened and where we were.
We had, we had overtime also. That she made mention of the guys coming in and they were late on Thursday. We wanted to pick up all of Thursdays and half of Fridays prior to the fourth holiday, and we didn't even finish Thursday.
No. And we, and the guys stayed. We had, I think it was 11 of the staff stayed on Thursday night, and we ran another mini-shift. The night, the day before the holiday, they came back, we came in and started at 3:30 and went to 7:00. We still didn't get all of Thursday picked up, but.
They've been, they've been, they've been great. They really have. And I appreciate them so much for, for the work that they've done and, and the help they've given you, starting out new. So it's, if we get the equipment up and going, we'll be all right.
Yeah, we, before we finish up here, recycling, I have to touch base on that a bit too. We had a forklift that we leased last year on a one-year lease with an option to purchase. Part of that program was that we would get credit for the lease, some of the lease that we paid in if we purchased it within one year. The lease is up in about 30 days. I guess it's probably maybe like 20 days now. The amount of credit that we would get towards the purchase is $7,830. The remaining purchase price on it would be $22,165. The $22,165 can be, they've offered us a purchase, which gives us the credit for the $7,800 to spread it over up to 36 months if we want to do it. I talked to Stacy about it. She suggested I bring it before you all, you all can think about if you have any questions about it, what the options are. We, if we want to preserve that $7,800 credit, we have to take some sort of action within the 30 days. We have budget.
What kind of condition is it?
It's in very good condition. It's, it's, and it just runs just extremely well. They had a maintenance program that was part of the, the lease thing, so it's been well-maintained. And our other forklift that's at recycling is an, either a 91 or 92 model. It has the solid rubber tires, and they're like, maybe not round anymore. And so I don't, I wouldn't say that we could rely on it. We had $10,000 in our budget to pay the lease for another year. So that, that much money was set aside to continue the lease program. That leaves us, you know, $12,000 short of the purchase price, so.
Linda, I've been part of buying forklifts on numerous occasions, and you can get a really, really nice forklift for a lot less money for that. I mean, a very nice forklift for less than $22,000.
Well, that this is, this, this program, we need to make a decision about this program. If we want to purchase one someplace else.
I got a thought. Could you give Brad, do they have VIN numbers or serial numbers or what does it?
They do have VIN numbers.
Yeah.
Could you give Brad that, that information and let him kind of do a, you can do, you can pull up values on stuff like that with the hours and. Let him kind of shop it a little bit for you and give us an idea.
That's, yeah, I was looking to see, I thought I might have that. I have a serial number here. Is that the same thing as the, okay, I'll give that to him.
Yeah, there's several different resources on buying those things that you can get them for. Is it, is it battery propane? Typically, your battery is the most expensive part for a unit like that, but you can replace.
It's a pneumatic gas truck, so.
Propane gas.
Propane.
Okay. Yeah, that's.
You know, and if keeping it were an option, you know, if that were, I'd want to know what the terms were, what the interest rate was. Because it, you know, my guess is it's probably not as low as like the line of credit the water company had tonight, 2.75. That's my guess. And Stacy knows that kind of stuff and.
The purchasing, or the, the price for carrying it.
Yeah.
Was 1,600 for the, that was for three years. If you took less years, that 1,600 lowered with each year.
I guess they'll show us what that interest rate would be.
36 months.
But anyway.
On the finding 12,000, if we have 10 set aside for a lease.
Yeah.
Just the fact that we have 10,000 budgeted for the lease continuation, is that?
They dropped the price down to 12.
Need to find 12,000.
We need $12,000.
Yeah. And the other thing that I would ask is if we kind of go back to, if it, if, if we determine that we want to kind of work on this vehicle, is that we try to ask for something above and beyond. You know, I mean, it's, it's really negotiable at this point. Maybe they can throw in additional warranty or maybe they can replace the tires.
The service, yeah.
Or replace the, the tires, the wheels on the other.
The other one, yeah.
Yeah, just some thoughts.
And there, and there's typically a quarterly, either a bi-monthly or a quarterly type of service plan that'll run 300 or 400 bucks. So that may, I'm sure that's factored into that too, but.
They're, they're monthly. It's $90 and, $90 even per month.
So we're, we're carrying that plus the, the lease payment?
We would have to add that to what the, the lease payment for the 30 months was, or 36 months was going to be 659.94. Then plus, if we wanted the, the maintenance was optional.
But the $7,000 that we have invested, is that including the $90 a month?
The $90 is not included in that.
Wow, okay.
That's outside the purchase price or the credit, either one. That's just $90 for the maintenance.
Brad, we appreciate if you would look into that for us.
I'll get you those numbers. Any other questions?
On the garbage truck you were talking about, the possibility of us purchasing, how much would that garbage truck cost? About a half million?
160, 169,000. This is not another automated truck.
Oh, okay.
I, I would not, at this point, recommend another automated truck. They are fabulous trucks. We're not, I don't feel like we're ready here in the city of Georgetown to adapt ourselves to that truck yet. I think we could be in a short period of time, and it is an awesome beast picking up the trash. But we would have to educate the citizens. We're going to have to educate ourselves. We're going to have to come up with some different routes. We need to reroute the city because the last time it was done, the last maps that I had were 2007, and there's been a teeny bit of growth since then and.
And what are we paying a month to lease a truck or to rent a truck?
It was $4,900, one month's rent. There was $1,000 in 2050 approximately for transportation costs. If we extend that lease another month, it would be pro ra, a prorated cost, and it would be less than the 49. And that would continue to drop if we kept it for up to six months if we had to. If we don't get the automated truck back, we're going to have to hang on to that one for a while.
The one that's a state truck that you were talking about that's, that's available right now?
Mm-hmm.
When would you be able to get that?
If he hasn't sold it, we could have it as soon as we could write the check and make the arrangements and get it in there if it's not gone yet. The quote he gave me on it was about, what's it, 10 days ago, eight or 10 days ago. 6/27, so it's been two weeks ago.
And now, what was the number again?
$169,000. That's two tippers, 25-yard, and it is a Freightliner 1415 model.
Would this, I mean, do you foresee if we, if we bought that truck, that we would have to have? Are you all asking for a budget amendment? Would we be going over the sanitation department?
We had $300,000 that, out of the sanitation budget that was placed in reserve. I don't know what exactly the technical term that you did, but there's 300,000. And that, I believe that that purchase included one, another automated truck, which is around 250,000.
I think we would have to do a budget amendment though to move it from that contingency fund back into a capital expenditure fund.
But it's not a budget, but it's not a budget overage.
Right, right, right.
It's just to move it, yeah.
Just moving money.
Does she have to wait two weeks to do that though? Can't we do, make some kind of a decision tonight for them to be able to move forward if that truck's still available, if they're in that dire of a need?
Well, we're going to have to get one.
Well, the mayor could declare an emergency and take some action if you have to.
I haven't got the emergency word yet from Linda yet.
We were in an emergency two weeks ago.
Yeah, for $5,000 a month, I can't imagine us going.
You just didn't see us out there.
For five grand a month, I can't imagine us going on and spending $200,000 or $170,000 without exploring it. I mean, that would be.
The $5,000 a month, you mean the rental?
Right.
The rental truck does, is not as efficient or.
Sure.
Or as big as what we need.
Sure.
Do we have motion?
I don't know if we do. I don't know if we need one right now.
No.
Just continue on the route we're going? Okay.
We're going to keep trying to pick it up as long as we can. As long as we can.
Linda, thank you.
Thank you all.
Sounds great. I know not all of that was good, but it sounds great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counsel, any comments? Have you been getting any phone calls also?
A few.
I have a comment, it's about trash. I sent you my little friendly note on that. But I have something for the traffic committee and for Kyle. The subdivision that we both live, Mark and I both live in, there is the boulevard. They're now, it's community homes, they're now building houses on that. And, I know. And if you, if they start parking in front of that, we can't get down there, but there's no, no parking signs. So it needs to have no parking signs on it. Because the other day, there was a car parked there, and I was trying to get through, and there was about, about much room between my van and their, their car. So catch it now before, before it goes further.
It's already been approved by planning committee.
Uh-huh, but what about the parking?
That would have been part of it.
Okay, well, we'll check on it, see what it is. Because there is no way, fire truck, that's what we always keep talking about. There is absolutely no way an ambulance could get past if there's a car parked there or definitely not a fire truck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're putting the houses all the way down.
Which street is it in there?
What is that street that comes in there? Thorndale or something like that?
I believe it is.
Yeah, I think it's Thorndale. Yeah. So that's going to end up being, catching now before it ends up being a bigger mess, then.
It's already been approved. PNC, I wouldn't have to go through the Traffic Committee?
I don't know. Do you need to do some research?
I'm looking to.
Find out.
Okay, good.
I have a question. The sidewalk beside on North Hamilton, beside Georgetown Printing, is still pebbly, dangerous. It's a long way down that side. Is there any way that they could, I know we talked about trying to do something. Think, does Georgetown Printing have a responsibility to that as well? It's dangerous. I'm just telling you when you're walking.
Where is it again?
Right down there, North Hamilton, at the lot.
Next corner up?
Next corner up from us.
It is in bad shape.
You know, it is. We did have a program there, and I don't know if you created it or started it. I think you did. We're, yeah, and that was a great program.
They were.
And, you know, we may be getting, we may, and I don't know, you may already know the answer to this, but some net profits taxed, perhaps, I guess, maybe in the near future, hopefully. Maybe some things like that could be, and, you know, a garbage truck, whatever the case may be, fall underneath that umbrella if that comes through. And I don't know anything, guys, but I just, I remember Stacy saying something that we may be, we may be getting some news here.
I was just going to ask for clarification. I think I know where you're talking about. Is it, is it all broken up, or are you just talking about the texture of it?
Oh, it's a little both. I mean, it, yeah, it's pretty rough.
Gravel rolls under your feet when you walk.
Yeah.
It's broke. It's both. And it's a pretty ways down the hill.
Yeah.
Down to the alley.
So that's more than just one property owner, then. That's several down through there.
It's pretty rough, because I walk it just, you know, pretty, pretty regular, coming up to have lunch at Gallons or Seckway or whatever, but...
You're right. It's in bad shape. He broke that down, didn't he?
I'm sorry?
It would be, I mean, I would think it would be brushed rough intentionally because of the grade during winter, but this is not what...
No, no. You got exposed rock.
It's crumbling, it's crumbling, Kelly.
Report correctly.
Any other comments?
These all should go to Dusty, Code Enforcement.
Yeah, if you look at the ordinance, technically, Code Enforcement is supposed to notify the owners of the property that their sidewalk is out of code or is a violation of some sort. That's a tall order, but...
Such a, such a public sidewalk. That's the other...
It is, yeah.
I guess my take on it, I don't know who owns the building. I have no idea, but Connie's, I mean, this has come up before. Something needs to be done to fix it. And with, how many pedestrians travel each and every day?
I agree.
I mean, I don't feel like we, I feel like we could have some level of responsibility on that, in that particular case.
Sure.
And I'd be okay with that, personally.
Public office could do it.
It's a combination of a very steep hill and some really bad spalding on the sidewalk that is causing that, that pebbly. So, yeah, I agree.
So do I need to do something and report that to Code Enforcement, or?
We'll just get, we'll get in touch with you, Lynda.
I'm sorry? Okay.
I'll follow up with Dusty.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On the sidewalk program, when it was still in effect, was there a committee, or did that come before Traffic Committee or a Sidewalk Committee, or some sort of decision-maker as far as approving the project and the 50-50 share?
Mayor, seems like it was maybe, maybe it might have been you.
It was a good program, and it worked well.
Yeah, I mean, that might be something we need to, but have a...
Take another look at that, because we have plenty of sidewalks that need our attention.
The way that worked out, though, I think the mayor was in control. I think we had so much money set aside, and first come, first served, until you ran out of funds, and that's how we did it.
It was 50-50 match, I believe.
Yeah, 50-50 match, and it was...
A lot of people took advantage of it.
They did.
Oh, yeah, my neighbors did.
And they should.
Well, yeah, I mean...
Since it's their responsibility to begin with.
But it just beautifies the cities, all it does, the community.
But there, you know, there are projects, I think, that are more, you know, if we did that again, would be more urgent. Like, for example, North Hamilton versus, you know, a pretty nice sidewalk in another part of the city that might have a couple cracks, you know, so, so if there would be a way to, if we did it again, to prioritize it, you know, either get the city engineer...
Send something like that to Traffic Committee, pretty easy. I would think you would want to have Code Enforcement say, all right, I have the 50 sidewalks that I've seen that are in bad shape here, the top 15, and then bring that to Traffic Committee and have Traffic Committee prioritize. It'd be an easy way to do it.
Any other comments? Motion to adjourn.
Wait, hope, hope we're not to get an update on Dominion, if we could. Danger could give us a little update.
Sure. Don't let Willow Lane...
Yeah, Willow Lane.
Okay, so, where are we?
Well, we're looking for a mysterious woman. That's who.
Oh, there we go. We don't know how mysterious she is. We just can't find her.
Yeah, we just can't find her.
We know name on...
Please continue.
First put a stop work order on some point the week, yeah, it was the week before. It was the week before the holiday. Put a stop work order on Dominion, and they got to work right away, digging test holes to try to find where horizontally where they needed to go. Submitted us a plan, and so we immediately went to work on trying to get these easements signed. Well, we hit a snag. The snag being that we, we were under the impression, because the developer is telling us that, that they owned the property at 101 Copper Kettle Path. Many of you, the people who live there pay their rent to Barlow Homes, so that would, that would make sense. But when you go to the County Clerk's office, the deed is in a woman's name, a Shirley Kounar. The address listed is Barlow Homes' address. We cannot, for the life of us, track this person down. We, I have had the police look. I've had Mr. Barlow look. I've had some other folks look. We cannot find this woman. Now, Mr. Barlow says, well, I'm the president of the HOA. I can sign it. Unfortunately, it doesn't work that way. So until we can find this person, we're at a little bit of a standstill, so...
I have a question about that.
Sure.
The lady rents her house to someone?
She does.
And she pays it to Barlow?
Yes, she does.
Does Barlow send a net check to that woman?
I don't know.
Well, who collects her money? Because I know I would be sending a net check. I'm just saying.
I don't have that answer, because I can't figure out who this is, but I guess, if I was to guess, I would think this person was somehow affiliated with Barlow, whether she was a property manager or something along those lines at some point.
At one time, she was employed.
At one time, she was employed. There you go. One time, she was employed by Barlow. So I don't think this is just a random person. I think this was probably the person at Barlow responsible for collecting the payment. It was previously a rental unit, and then it was sold to, I guess, sold to Barlow, and Barlow continued to rent it and still continues to rent it to this day. And what I suspect has happened is that that was deeded to Barlow and never properly filed in the County Clerk's office. So hopefully, we can simply locate that deed, get it filed, and then Barlow can sign that easement. And they are working on that.
Okay.
If not, we got to find this person so she can sign the easement. But as a result, it's no longer Dominion. We can no longer hold Dominion accountable, because we're the ones with the responsibility for getting that easement signed. So we've lifted that stop work order. And we're working every day to try to get this thing straightened out, and hopefully, we will have a resolution. The other easement has been signed. It's ready to go.
We just need one piece of the puzzle. That's all that's left.
The last piece of the puzzle, and if anybody has any great suggestions, I'm open for anything at this point.
So the woman that has the deed in her name, you cannot find?
We cannot find her.
But Barlow purchased it. Did he pay cash? Did he have an attorney?
There's no, there's no record in the courthouse of any, of any transaction, so... All I know is they're just collecting the check.
They're collecting the check and keeping it?
They're collecting the check, but legally, she owns it.
How quickly can you do eminent domain for an easement?
It takes six months.
It's not a good idea.
There is no, there is no provision just for...
We don't want that.
There is no provision that I'm aware of just to do eminent domain for, I mean, you could, but it's still got to go through the same legal process.
How long has Barlow owned this property?
How long have they owned it? I don't know.
From this woman?
I don't know. I know she's owned it since 2005. So I think, prior to that, it was owned by a Common Rentals LLC, and Common Rentals LLC is a subsidiary of...
Barlow.
Yeah, so you're as stymied as I am about it.
We certainly wanted, we're trying to get this thing settled this week. It's been a priority, and...
So there's no way that Barlow can sign that easement?
He said he was going to talk to his lawyer. He thinks there is a way.
He can talk to his lawyer all he wants, but there's just, I mean, it's legally, there's no way. I told, I said, go and speak to your lawyer. If the deed's in her name, the County Clerk is not going to accept it without proof of valid ownership. And I don't blame them.
By Barlow Homes, yeah.
And we could argue till, we could argue till the cows come home, that they are the rightful owners of that, but as far as getting an easement filed on the deed of record, our hands are tied. We could go to a court. We could go to a court and ask the court to somehow order it, but...
How much, I mean, how many more avenues are there? Have we done a search for what?
I did my own just Google search, and that turned up a whole bunch of locations. And that's when I asked the police department to sort of put the bloodhounds on it.
Does she own any other properties in Scott County?
No other properties in Scott County. I don't know. I haven't done that search. I would...
She associated with any boards registered in the Secretary of State's office?
Yeah, it's a mystery.
As I said, mystery woman.
Just know that we're, we're putting all of our thoughts and efforts into it.
Yeah, we're on the verge.
And we're going to have a line of them standing out here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. We're on the verge of getting this problem taken care of, but...
There's not anything legally, as a city, or anything, there's not even a small avenue possibility of being able to get something to where you can put that easement in there.
I will keep, I will keep asking...
It's called eminent domain. I did it for 20 years with Transportation Caster. You file the lawsuit, you name Barlow who claims he owns it and has been collecting rents and paying taxes. You file also for an unnamed, unknown party. The court will appoint an attorney to represent them, and then you'll get it. They'll send somebody out to appraise, and you can file for an easement only. You have them appraise it, you deposit the money, and you can put it in. Then, the lawsuit can last for years. You do not have to wait, and it is not six months.
But with all due respect...
With all due respect, I did it for 20 years.
Whoa, 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 just a moment. This...
I just want to be on the record. I feel very uncomfortable as far as doing this by eminent domain or condemnation, as long as the possibility existed that we could find the lady, Ms. Kounar, with all due respect to the former city attorney. I will throw one quick suggestion. Could we go ahead and cut the ditch in without putting the pipe in and officially obtaining the, you know, the easement? You know, go ahead and kind of start some of the grade work? I mean, if we feel that confident, Mr. Barlow owns it?
We're not doing the work.
Well, then...
We're not, we're not bidding it out. We're not carrying the insurance on it.
Okay.
And Dominion is doing it. If they're comfortable with doing it, that's their legal prerogative, but I...
And they will not be comfortable in doing it. After the meeting we had last week, they're not doing it.
Well, thanks for the update.
Thanks.
Now, motion for a...
All in favor, I? Thank you.
Yeah.